It's got a curfew.
This is pretty important, but.
Well, good evening and welcome to tonight's committee of the whole meeting, Monday, August 5, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with all official notifications. Roll call, please.
Laura Gaffskey here, Taylor here, Nick Olson here, Nick Schumacher here, Sarah Schuber McCollum here, President Steve Olsen.
Here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. We'll now move to our committee of the whole agenda. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward, is to be forwarded for recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting. Were any comments from the public this evening? Thank you. So first on our agenda, then second on our agenda would be our report from our superintendent.
Right, I just have one thing tonight, our FBLA Leadership Conference update, we have been asked to push that to next Monday. So they'll be here next Monday to get that update. So I just have one update tonight. Every fall I share annual goals and action steps with the board on my own professional learning plan going into the next school year. Our teachers and principals are required to have professional learning goals per statute, all of our directors do as well, and so these are my goals and action steps for the upcoming school year. I met with President Olson to kind of talk through these. I have two big goals that I'd like to be focused on in the upcoming school year. One, I've tried to combine our referendum and our strategic planning process into the same goal. So just to read it here, set long, my goal would be for this year to set long-term vision for the future of the Superior School District by engaging the Superior Community, working alongside you, engage a broad state, a group of stakeholders in a robust and successful strategic planning process that creates a clear vision and district goals for the school district for the next five years, and engage all stakeholder, ensure all stakeholders are aware and buy into that strategic plan, those district goals and the steps for achieving the vision. And then the second part of that is as part of the operational referendum potentially that you guys will be looking at tonight, bring our school community together to plan the financial stability or the fiscal, yeah, financial stability and priorities for the next five years around our finances. So regardless of the outcome, still needing to have a vision for our, our plan around finances, and those are the action steps there. I think my first step there is anything we do like this, I think needs to be based in best practice and research. And so trying to bring some of those resources to us to do it well. These are two really big things that our district is taking on this fall. And so usually you do these once over the course maybe of your career, and we're doing them both in the fall. And so doing them well and communicating it out well is really important to me. I think that needs to be my focus going into this upcoming school year. And then the second goal, if you want to scroll down, Anne, is more specific to instructional leadership. Uh, the specific goal, well, let me give a little bit of background. For the last couple of years, I've had a personal goal of working with our district leaders and staff to increase our graduation rates. When I came into the district, we were in the bottom 5%. So really, I'm working with our teachers and our principals on what that needs to look like in the, in our future years. And I know we don't have our graduation data back for the class of 2024, but we continue to be above 95% for this last school year. And so super proud of that. It's probably one of the most proud things I, I can think of as a, in my professional care, career that we've been able to move that needle to a place where we're above the state average. I don't necessarily want to, I keep, I keep saying, I don't want to take my foot off the gas. We need to keep watching that data point, but I want to elevate that goal next year to not only making sure all kids graduate from the Superior School District, but graduate college, career, and life ready, and defining what that looks like by our reading and our math scores. And so my goal next year would really be to focus my instructional leadership on increasing those reading and math scores. Because I think regardless of whether, what you do after high school, being proficient in reading and math are critical skills you need to be successful. And so that would be my focus in this upcoming school year, working closely with principals and directors and teachers. We've got Act 20 training that, that's going to be implemented and making sure that happens. Student engagement work, we've done a lot of work around special education and making sure we continue to, to focus on ensuring those students are in the least restrictive environment and getting the services they need. So not necessarily, not looking at the graduation rates anymore, but elevating the expectations around not just graduation, but, but graduating at a high level.
Amy, is that the expectation then that each one of the building, building principals in concert with you and then mapping out a plan of how that looks in each one of their buildings and how they'll, they'll measure that throughout the year then?
So I'm working closely with Kate and Crystal. We're, we're working with our teacher teams next week as part of a three-day summer, basically a summer institute where we start looking at our data. But my, my leadership will be to support the work that we're doing starting next week. And those plans will be documented through our school improvement efforts. So every school have a school improvement plan that will align to these goals around increasing reading and math, which they have been, but we're going to focus more, we've done so many very specific things in the last six months and will be continuing to do that work, whether it's new curriculum adoption, new instructional practices that we're adopting, the Act 20 requirements, there's a lot of, of new work that we're doing. And so my leadership will shift to, to working through that and supporting our directors, our principals, and our teachers in that work.
Can you scroll back up again?
Sure.
Thank you.
To the top?
Yeah, I want to see goal one.
Okay.
You have any feedback for me on that? Can you scroll down? Just do the action step. Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you. No, the access, she was saying. I can share this out in an email after the meeting.
Yeah, Amy, maybe this is, um, you know, maybe this is you're the higher level, right? Like the macro, I get, I get that. I'm, I'm also like, I think we've worked really hard on, like, I'm just looking for like the word like belonging or like safe environment or like.
I think that'll come through the strategic plan.
Okay.
So between what the board and the staff define as a strategic plan, I would imagine my goal next year will be focused on rolling out the action steps of the strategic plan that you guys, that you guys approve this school year.
Right on.
So this is just specifically making sure that we develop a quality strategic plan. You will define what those components should be, and that'll be my role next year to carry that out. Where some of the people I think will be housed. Does that make sense?
Got it. Yeah.
An indicator of success also be an approved referendum?
Well, I put on here, regardless of whether it's approved or not, we still have a responsibility to have a fiscal plan for the next five years. So my role, I think, I will work, I have to be very careful on my role in this referendum. And I'm looking at Kyle for any advice he has in this moment. But my role will be to make sure we're fiscally stable and we have a long-range plan regardless of the outcome of the referendum. Does that make sense?
Sure. So should that be like, we have a plan regardless of whether the referendum is approved or not, we have a plan?
I put on here five-year, oh, sorry. I have on here five-year budget projection articulating long-term school plan. But, um.
Yeah, I'm gonna scroll a little bit more.
Yeah, right, there you go. And an annual budget that will align to those priorities are on there. You have any feedback for me? And like I said, next week we'll have Donna here to just give us an update on the leadership conference. And with that, that's all I have for my report tonight.
Amy, I just want to say that's really ambitious, taking those two on, and that I hope you can rely on the board to, you know, be strong.
Two big things that we're taking on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So being able to do them well, important.
Hey, moving on in our agenda then, Budget Insurance Committee, Mr. Nick Olson.
I got a couple informational items, Fund 10 Revenue and Expenditure Reports. Not much on the revenue side, if anything.
I mean, not as big of a business as I support, I know. The main thing is revenues need to be at the bottom. Side of this, the other numbers are going to build in, just the easy math without refinancing. Budget about 60 million last year, losing five assets aside, I'm going to be able to pull less your money over first over the year. So we're going to be looking at it around between 55 to 56, what I'm going to estimate is our, our revenue next year. A big other big part of it too is the numbers for this week will be on site on Wednesday. So that's where a lot of the, the numbers are going to shift as well. Last year, of course, affects this year. So that's where there's going to be a bunch of differences, but.
Is that just a one-day thing then?
On, well, they're, they're on site Wednesday, Thursday, half of Friday. And then that's when they come and look at stuff, where they have to actually hold the invoice in hand. Then after that is, you know, probably a few months of working through the data. They got to do single audits on all of our grant stuff because we're over $1 million on the still. And just making sure everything's looking correctly. DPI is going through review flux or gains right now. So it's a matter of trying to cram our numbers in computer system. Last year didn't go well. Sharehold like gets a little better since around here too, their system.
Got you. Uh, next informational item, just a preview of referendum resolutions. Complete resolutions will be reviewed at the regular board meeting next week. You want to talk?
So I think the big question is speaking with the board members individually is what options we go with. What do we, what the responses were with the survey and looking at what we have, what we can do for you to solve the role. We're going to go with option one as the school referendum. This whole process is extremely, extremely cumbersome. When you come back and you ask them for one question, they said you had 22-page contract. What the ballot question is going to be though is shall the school district disappear, Davis County, Wisconsin? Be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section 121.91, Wisconsin statutes. Like 2.5 million dollars per year for the 24, 25 school year. 2.25 million for the 25, 26 school year. 3.5 million for 26, 27 school year, 4.5 million for 27, 28 school year, and 5.5 million 28, 29 school year for non-recurring purposes consisting of operational and maintenance expenses, including the educational program, facility maintenance, and security updates. So, um, once this is official, like August 12th is when I think you know, working with Amy, we've already had meetings on the inside, internal meetings of how we're going to roll this out. Um, the key is we are going to have bring outside stakeholders, we're going to bring community members in there. I've had a few reach out to me, said that they're willing and able to join in. It's going to be, yeah, there's telegrams, get permission with them. E.C. Smith and David Coyle are going to be actually. We are going to work them hard until November 2nd. It's going to be the buy-in, it can be the buy-in of every single person that works in the district. With, you know, all the employees, SFT is already said they're willing to help all board members on how we're getting this out there. I've talked to other people that have offices and ask for, you know, recommendations and stuff. They said we got to run like a campaign, so I'll be actually writing on you because well, and campaigns, voted in, I don't understand the intrinsics of that. You know, I want to be real aggressive on it, so that's where we're now. We're, you know, working with Kyle and also working with Corals down in the south, telling what the rules are. Amy said, there's a lot of things we can't do with, I can't lock into meetings and you should vote for this.
Right.
For some reason, I can't do that. But we have other people out there. Um, yeah, it's going to be a lot of work. Like Amy said, I'm part of that strategic plan, thankfully a smaller piece of it. And when I talked to other districts saying, hey, this is what we're doing, and then I said, yeah, we're also going to run the strategic plan with the referendum. When you sleep. So what, what we're taking on this year is pretty, is pretty but I haven't seen anybody say that's not taken on work, we're doing it for the right reasons. The state has decided that they, they want to, and put these me and Chris on us, they know who said that they're going to cut the budgets. And the school perception survey, over 60% of this community said, yeah, I would vote for some kind of referendum for you. And then they had another like 15% that said, I'm not sure. We're only looking at maybe 22% that said no. Um, I think we can change all of that 22% mind as well because they don't understand what is, what is happening. How 87% of the districts out there have done this, or 85% have done this since our first strike. We are the definition of fiscal responsibility when it comes to that. And we're going to continue going to this option one, this is where it puts us at risk at year four and year five. It's, you know, we, we will need to continue to make cuts. But regardless of the, regardless of what we were going to get, we were going to continue with the cuts because we're having so we will be fine with it. Plans or, you know, you can just see plans if something doesn't change, um, for public education funding. Um, we'll pick a something out for years four, year five, do this.
Do we even address that in our messaging? Years four and five, like getting the word out about the referendum, do you even talk about, uh, we're going to be short four and five?
And we need to talk about why year four and five look different than years one and two. I think people are going to want to understand that. So I think that, that's my.
The biggest message on that is we have to save now. That's what I mean, that's in year four and five, we have to be able to save. We came to you, that's the other strategy, but this is our first time voting, so frankly. And unfortunately, once you usually go to a referendum, you're stuck in that referendum cycle unless there's a change. We have to gain the trust of other people this first referendum so that on the second one and the third round, they trust that what we're talking.
Right.
Well, I was very happy with the results we got from the survey. But it's going to take a lot of, a lot of messaging from, when people look at what we're saying, a $7 increase for, for $100,000. They need to understand and know that there is already a sunk cost. Next year, taxes are going up. Um, this past year, we had $35 million in equalization aid. This year, we're at $32 million. Why did it go down? Because it gives us a boatload of S R money to spend, which doesn't count for equalization aid. And they said our value, I think, you know, 18% of the rest of the state went 42%. So now they're saying, well, you guys aren't as poor there because you're, these are the one. But this county will be here to have a 10% increase. They're going to get, they get our chunk of the money. So it's also that equalization aid. That's if they came out of July first, so what's going on in Milwaukee, like it could skew off quite a bit. There's a lot of I hope that's the base, you know, I hope that's the floor. And then there might be something, we have to be a higher ceiling off of that. Again, not an increase on revenue, still going to have around 55, 56 million dollars in revenue. Just some of, less of a couple of the taxpayers.
Sure.
Local taxpayers, state.
Other thing that's really important is we also need to communicate that even with a past referendum, we still are going to make reductions each year. Um, the purpose of this would be to reduce the, the amount of money we have to cut and to try to maintain class sizes and programs. But there'll still need to be reductions just given the projections of our student enrollment going down. So when I was in Duluth, that was a concern from some community members saying, I thought we passed a random and we didn't need to do cuts. So it's just really important people to understand, it's not that they'll eliminate the need for all cuts, but it'll help reduce the amount that we need to do to try to maintain our class sizes and programs.
You should be proud of that, that, you know, in, you know, five years from now, we're saving out $5.5 million of all the revenue. That is only $500,000 more than what we got last year. So we are still making significant cuts as it's going forward. Because you're going to run into inflation and then you're going to end up back into declining enrollment worth. Hey, you lost 10, 15, cross 10 degrees, lost $100,000. How did you use, use your expenses? You can reduce them a penny because you're going to keep all the teachers, all the work.
I think it's important too that it's, I mean, knowing that, like Amy said, we're trying to listen to what the community said in the surveys. And so by choosing option one, that's the one that they, you know, said the most. And so again, trying to honor that in their request too. So I think that's important to, to say.
Anything else?
Oh, the only other thing I wanted to mention about that is you'll notice that on the agenda tonight, there are informational items because we didn't have the specific resolutions yet. We've still been working with the attorneys to draft those as the time, at the time of the pushing out of this agenda. Those will move to action items next week with the resolutions embedded within there.
Uh, two action items, gifts, grants, and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in July 2024.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Next action item, administration recommends approval to delegate the Director of Business Services, the authority to negotiate the sale of Lake Superior Elementary. And I would like to amend that action item to read, administration recommends approval to delegate the Director of Business Services. Uh, a school board member or Dr. and Dr. Starzaki?
A school board official.
School board officer. And Dr. Starzaki, the authority to negotiate the sale of Lake Superior Elementary. To negotiate the sale of Lake Superior Elementary and to sign the contracts. How's that? Second. Is there a motion?
Hear me.
You made it.
Did you make it? Did I make the motion?
Yeah.
I made the motion. I hear a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none, motion carries. I have no discussion items. Nothing else. That concludes my report. President Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Next, Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Nick Schumacher.
All right. Uh, mission items, Nina Hagan, Director of Service Services, presentation of the 2324 seclusion and restraint data.
All right, so a little bit of background for those of you that haven't heard this before. Every year by October 1st, you need to receive a report on our seclusions and restraint incidents from the previous school year.
So can you define what seclusion and restraint is?
Yeah. Um, so seclusion is a situat, well, let me back up before I define them individually. Um, this is all guided by statute for us. And one of these two things can be used when a pupil's behavior presents a clear, present, and imminent risk of physical safety of the people or others and it's restrictive intervention. So hopefully it's a rare circumstance when this is happening, but we do have some emergency situations with students that require um, teams to kind of go into some actions which could result in a seclusion or a restraint. So more commonly is a restraint, which means staff are trained to use a certain physical holding situation of a student where they're not able to move away from them. In other words, when they're super upset and they're trained in various different kinds of holds. So that's a restraint. And then a seclusion, which happens even less, is when a student is so, um, so much in a situation where there needs to be a place where they are, they're not locked in a situation where they can't like leave a room, but they are put into a place where they can, um, you know, calm down without fear of the physical contact hurting of someone else, if that makes sense. So last year, we had eight seclusions across the district K-12. Well, this, this includes pre-K-12. Three-year-olds to age 21 is what this data includes. Um, so eight of those and 20 restraints of students. And this also covers students that have an IEP and students that don't have an IEP. We keep track of all of it. So, um, it's, um, divided up for you to be able to see that there. But I think what's really important to highlight is on the second page, is the amazing decrease, isn't there a second page? Yep. That top table there, like the amazing decrease of incidents over the past five years. Because you can see in 1920, there were 131 instances and now we're down to 28, even nine less than the previous year. So there's a list in this report of all the things that we've worked on to get to these lower numbers. And hopefully they continue to go down. I think most importantly, um, you know, we've been more intentional about focusing on this, training more people, putting more systems and support in place for principals and other staff. And just, like I said, an intentional focus. So then the last step for this each year is by December 1st of each year, I have to give a report to the DPI um, in a more like technical fashion. Questions or anything I didn't cover you want to know about?
The training like around verbal de-escalation mainly?
It's actually both, but it's mainly, you're right, verbal de-escalation first. Um, it's a long training. The, we use Crisis Prevention Institute, which is the company that provides the training. There are several companies around, but most commonly schools use CPI. Um, that's the name of the company. And so, yeah, it's an eight-hour training for an initial training of a person mostly spent on verbal de-escalation of students. And then the physical holds piece of it too, when it, if it does get to that big emergency, they'll be prepared to, to handle that.
So all principals have been trained, right? And all special education teachers?
Yep.
And then we try to, and we try to train as many paraprofessionals as we can over the course.
And we even have extra people in crisis response teams that have been trained in buildings, some counselors, some nurses, just people that are usually on a response kind of situation. So, um, and then we give a refresher to people every two years to make sure they keep their skills up. And then in certain situations, if we have a really big situation, we'll do extra training, we'll do refreshers more often than needed. We'll even go to like an advanced skills situation.
But even for people who don't go to CPI training, we try to train as many other people as we can on the verbal pieces so that they know how to prevent the situation from occurring to begin with.
Yep.
If you go back up, um, when there's like, I think it was 18 to nine was the ratio number of restraints, 18 total students involved, nine. Does that mean then that maybe one student had more than one occurrence? So, so really it's interesting to see, I mean, those numbers are really low for the students involved, actually, which is really good.
Yep, staff are doing a really nice job with verbal de-escalation so that we don't get to this point.
What does, um, I see the, um, debrief. You know, how do you support the teachers that are para-professionals that are involved in that situation?
Yeah, so there's a required debrief that has to happen, and the principals lead this in the building. And so they pull together a, the group of people that were involved um, to debrief the situation and fill out a specific form to reflect on the situation and, and all of the things for that. And then every time there's a situation, a principal contacts me and we kind of decide like, is it something I need to come to, to support the team and the principal? Usually the principals are pretty comfortable doing this on their own, but.
I'm just, that's a good question because I think, I think you mean deeper, like how are we supporting the teachers? Because that's traumatic for teachers to have to do or paras or, or others. So what are we doing? I think that's what you mean, and that's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, usually the debrief with their team and their principal seems to be enough. I haven't heard things that have led me to other thoughts, but if there is continuing something, like I said, I'll get involved and go to the school and meet with the team and talk through, you know, what else? Sometimes we've had situations where Sometimes we've had situations where, you know, if there's a kind of ongoing situation where there's more than one incident with a certain person, they just kind of get burned out. So then we'll be really intentional of switching out, making sure that we're not putting that person in a continuous situation if it's affecting their you know, their own mental health or, so it it's case by case, but it it doesn't seem to be a huge issue that I've heard as far as the debris stuff.
And what about staff injuries? Cause a lot of times something's led up to
Right.
that situation.
Yeah, so anytime there's an injury, um you know, that obviously gets processed through our staff injury process. Um we have had some situations where there's, like I just talked about, certain staff have been through multiple situations with a certain student. And so we worked really hard to make sure that we're swapping people out and we have a large team to be able to sub in and um but that's why we do have the ability to do a seclusion. Um in Minnesota, there's no seclusion availability, so this is new to me this year. Um but I I had heard um that, you know, the ability in in those rare occasions when you need to really protect the staff and things, that's a notion and be necessary to to help with that kind of stuff, which it's really hard to think about that, but yeah, it's a tool that sometimes needs to be used.
The other thing is we have a district safety committee that meets and we review accident reports. Um any stu- any staff injured through this is reviewed by that team. Molly's on that team as well as other district um administrators. And so at that team, we problem solve whether there needs to be more training at that building or whether we need to go and support that team in a different way. Um so between, I think you working with the principals and then I think our district team looking at the data on a regular basis. We try to get out of the buildings and provide support when situations are.
I will say that our CPI trainer is, we had more, but they're not with us anymore, but um Matt Amerson is our CPI trainer. And so the principals are very, you know, much in touch with him about sort of situations. And he's always good at, you know, figuring if we need to do those extra layers depending on situation.
Um where is the seclusion? How does, I just don't, does that physically look like?
Yeah.
So um some of our classrooms, like I'm thinking of a special education classroom, sometimes has a smaller breakout room off of it. Um that's usually used for like a calming space. That's a situation where you could, I mean, most times there's nothing in that room, so a student can't hurt themselves.
Right.
And you'd think else.
Yep.
And so that could be a situation where a student is able to calm down in a s- in a seclusion type of situation off of the special ed room. Those are the ones that I'm familiar with.
I've just been told about throwing chairs and stuff, so I'm like, what is in that room?
Nothing. Should be nothing. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, sometimes it starts out where they're basically figure out they need to clear the
Thank you. Just a lot of I know it's probably not, I don't know. I couldn't imagine how difficult that would be. So yeah, I'm glad to see the numbers go down. Thank you.
I am too. Any other questions?
Thanks, Dana.
Sure.
Crystal, it's men director for famous instructions, staff development days and new teacher orientation.
Ready? We have two annual things coming up that are pretty big in our district at the end of August. And so I thought I'd just let you know a few details about them. The first is we have our staff development days, August twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. So some things that will be included in those three days on the schedule will be um a gathering of all staff together. And we will be having the principals planning, building agendas where they'll kind of have those back-to-school big staff meetings. Go over some trainings. All of their staff will get a chance to be together. Um and then we will also have grade level meetings and subject area committees. So those groups will be gathering together and teacher leaders from our shared leadership team plan those agendas and work on that. And then on two of the half-days, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, um our teachers will have their teacher workday time where we don't have any like called gathered meetings. So they'll have that opportunity to get their classrooms ready or meet with their PLCs or other things they might need to do to prepare. And then, of course, we'll have our open houses on the evening of the twenty-eighth will be the middle school and high school. And then our elementary will be on the evening of the twenty-ninth. So it'll be three very busy days for staff. In about a week, a week and a half or so, Amy will be sending out a communication to the whole district so they know the schedule. And then I usually follow up with the teachers so they know the details of of the teacher meetings um within those. And then the second thing is we will be welcoming some new teachers at the end of this month. We will have thirteen new teachers joining us. Um we have an additional two teachers that were actually long-term subs with us last year that will formally be new teachers, but really they went through all the new teacher support and trainings and stuff last year as long-term subs. We always give our full-year long-term subs the opportunity to do that if they like. So um but we have thirteen that will come together for five days of training at the end of this month. They'll do everything from fill out their retirement and insurance paperwork with the HR department to learning about uh what supports look like for students in our district. Maybe a student who's on IEPs or a student who is experiencing homelessness. We help them learn about curriculum and where to find all those resources. They'll spend a full day with their mentor. They'll get time to work in their classroom. Um SFT comes and welcomes them and tells them about their organization. So there's a lot packed into those five days. Um and there'll be thirteen of them we welcome. So I just wanted to let you know some details about those two big things. Do you have any questions?
I guess twenty-seventh will be the full welcome back then.
Yes, and it's gonna look a little different. And I will be sharing the details later next week.
You might want to mark your calendars.
Yes. You might. No, that's what I'm saying. I was like, can we like? You're all invited. All invited, but um I will give you the details next week. Yes. It's gonna be fun.
It'll be fun. When is student registration starting?
Like, mm-hmm.
Does it get sent out?
Okay. Oh, when, like, when is the next week?
When do they send the email saying register?
At the end of next week. Next week? Into next week. Yeah. Oh, it's on Monday? Coming for all schools.
Sure.
School and.
Perfect. That's coming fast.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Fantastic. Director of continuous improvement and assessment, continues running updates act twenty assessment.
I just wanted to say good evening, uh not good morning. Yeah, almost. Um Amy had shared the draft of the strategic planning survey that I've been working on. Uh and I just wanted uh to kind of give a rundown of the process that we have worked through so far. Um the plan will be, we have some input from community members through the survey, uh through school perceptions regarding the referendum. But it didn't feel like quite enough to really give us a little enough information. So the goal of this survey is to send the survey out to staff uh and community, parents, including staff members as well in August for two weeks. We're on a short timeframe based on the fact that the strategic planning committee is coming together September sixteenth. So we need to share the survey, gather feedback to drive the work for the committee. But we need that back and able to process that um audio to the proof of September. So it feels a little like we've got a lot going on uh right now. But the goal of this survey is really to give us strengths, areas of improved, areas for improvement. Um some wish lists and then some things that we know are issues to identify. And that framework was given to us by uh Joe Schrader, who you'll all be meeting in September. Um I worked with him in a number of different capacities and I think he'll do a really nice job. He's done some really good work with many colleagues I know around the state. But that framework will then help as he leads the committee through the process of developing that strategic plan. So we tried to keep it simple enough that we could get people to fill it out. Uh I think the longer it gets, the more people go. I start and then I stop. So kind of a variety of just clicking strength, you know, I tried to make the the format accessible. I'm not school perceptions. They do a really great job, but uh I was free for this uh survey creation. Um but I just wanted to, uh I checked with Amy today and wanted to make sure that uh if there was anything that stood out as you looked through this uh to let me know um any comments, feedback, just for the.
I think just to reiterate your point, the purpose of this is really to hear from the community, what is their vision for our district for the next five, eight years? What is their, what's their vision of a a superior graduate? What skills should they have? What should our district be um striving to be? So I think you captured that.
That was the intent of how it was kind of formatted and created. I've had a variety of formats that I, we landed here. So um feedback or questions on that?
I just like the simplicity of strength or opportunity. That makes it a lot easier.
I was hopeful that would kind of narrow down and not have to ask multiple questions at the beginning.
Rare, yeah.
Yeah. I left out the you know, leave a blanket here, you know, neither or, yeah. Cause that doesn't give us information. That's really that's an important piece of designing a survey where you really want some good feedback. Um so our plan right now is to uh, I worked with Casey Smith and David Coy. Uh we will put a link and some information in the district newsletter that I believe is going out on August sixteen. And we will do a push through school messenger to our families and to our staff on August twenty-first. And then also do all of our social media to engage community as well the best we can.
How about chamber for employers? Is that an opportunity, Amy?
Um, well, we're looking at the school community giving us feedback on what they want that what they want us to look. There is an opportunity in the survey to be able for those folks to fill it out. You're saying, are we gonna push it out to the broader community?
Yeah.
We didn't.
Our plan was through
Yeah.
media.
Yeah, so they
Any of that way. Take it that way.
Yeah.
Um it's a that was our main strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there'll be an opportunity if you're not a parent to fill it out.
Yep.
You know, you talked about like the career ready.
Oh, sure.
So in like university, yeah, so I was wondering what.
Good point.
Anything else? Um so our first strategic planning committee meeting will be September sixteenth in the evening, followed by the day on September seventeenth. Um I will send another kind of full email to the group. Uh but we uh, I believe we're finalizing all of our arrangements for location, et cetera. And so that will come out shortly. I'm excited for that work. Anything else on strategic? Uh my last update is on act twenty assessment update. The state has signed a contract uh for our act twenty assessment and they did not pick a fast bridge. So Ames Web, which is a strategy we once owned years ago. Uh I have similar reaction. I'm, I'm like a month recovering from my initial reaction. So um what I wanted to share here is that I think I feel good about the plan that I've been working on with our instructional coaches, principals and waiting for teachers to come back and working specifically with grade level teachers on what is required. Some grade levels have only two assessments that are required to be given in Ames Web and it's not until January. And then I will work with grade levels to determine, do they need additional data? We will still utilize Fastbridge for grades four through eight and twelve with Sabers. So we will still purchase Fastbridge. It also is on the list of approved diagnostic assessments from the state. So it's another reason that it can still fit. So I think we, I know that we can make this as good as it can be. The biggest um, the biggest pieces I wanted to share were those. I also um our spring, the advocacy that I have with this is that the legislature put into statute that the assessments must be completed forty-five days prior to the end of the school year. Those are calendar days as defined by statute, which puts us at our spring benchmark test for kindergarten through third grade. Third grade being the biggest grade level impacted right in the middle of the forward exam window. So our kids will be taking the forward exam for the very first time. And they will also have to complete the required act twenty assessments. And they still have like a month and a little bit left in two weeks. They still have like six weeks left of school after that, in which most of our kids actually do learn quite a bit. So I think that spring window, I'm really hoping as we progress, there may be some potential updates to that calendar time. I think that's a real downside of why they put that language in statute. I'm not sure. We will continue to work on the family notification. I will share that with you come September and October, how we're going to uh fulfill the statute requirements around family notification of the data that comes out of those assessments. And then the reading plans that we are required by law to also have in place based on student scores on those assessments. So Ames Web is the selected statewide screener, a product of Pearson. And uh we will, we will do our best to minimize the impact on teachers of learning a whole new, an additional software. Um and I'll work closely with all of those grade levels to make sure that they have the other data that they need, not just these potentially two pieces.
It's a bummer even for families and parents who have gotten used to seeing that.
Yep, I agree. And I do uh, in working with all of the principals last Friday, I think it was a universal decision that we should continue with Fastbridge grades four on up. We don't need to make any changes. The other um downside of looking in, you know, looking into, do we just move everything to Ames Web? The state is purchasing the literacy components of Ames Web, but not the math components. We also still need a math screener. So if you choose to use Ames Web for math, you have to also purchase it. So again, Fastbridge, we can keep that and have the consistency there for our kids. So our families are going to receive pieces of information as teachers are using to pieces of software.
Are other districts being impacted similarly? I'm guessing. Can this be a resolution delegate um?
I think.
Request.
You know, we did a lot of work. We wrote letters last year when it was still in debate. The only concession that was made was moving the implementation from September to January, which isn't really helpful because we don't run on a January to January year. Um it did give us a little bit of time for training. Uh but our teachers really want data on their kids in September so they can teach. Uh and so I think it really didn't eliminate that. I think it will be very interesting and I'll keep you up to date as much as you want to know, uh as we go throughout the year. The website that was shared with us still lists coming soon under all of the categories from Pearson. So I don't have a lot more details on what the assessments look like yet, but as soon as I have that, I will be working. And I think just reassuring teachers, the coaches and I are gonna do everything we can to ease that load.
I don't know what ability we have to make any sort of changes now that this is already in law. But I'll, I'll reach out to other superintendents and see if there's any, I'm thinking any collective messaging.
A thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the talent, if I were to really, you know, a logistical challenge, and I think especially for kids. Um spring testing is always extremely hard. Kids are wiped out. Teachers are doing their very best. We know it's important. So I think I am concerned about the April spring benchmark window.
Was Sab allows us to bring things forward. I mean, that's not a huge ask, I would think, for them to lobby something like that if other districts are experiencing similar inconvenience and overburden.
I'm on the um legislative committee for the Superintendent's Association for Wisconsin, so I can reach out to my committee and ask if this is something we can collectively if there's a superintendent and if there's something I can bring back to boards. So we'll work through that on that committee.
Yeah.
Putting a resolution together right away.
Yeah.
This month, because it'll be due
September.
Right around September fifteenth. You're gonna be a busy girl.
Cause so, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Tim, Mr. Olson, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Next up is Brett Taylor and our Personnel and Negotiations Committee.
Great. Uh I just have one action item tonight. Uh administration recommends approval of the August twenty twenty-four new hires and separations report.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Only that um we've hired two new assistant principals at the middle school and you can see them up there. We welcome back Sam Berman, who had been a teacher with us. And Shannon comes to us from, um she's a former music educator who comes to us from Minnesota as well.
I was wondering about the custodians. It seems like it's been a little transient from the last month. How, how's it going? I was wondering about the custodians. It seems like it's been a little transient from the last month. How, how's it going?
Well, we filled all the jobs. So, yeah.
Cool.
And then we also hired another school year person who's studying over the summer too. So I think next couple of weeks, once we get those new people, they'll be fully staffed again.
Awesome. Okay. Thanks. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items, no informational items, and that ends my report, Mr. President.
Best efficient.
Mm hmm.
Our final report tonight is our Policies and Rules Committee, Mr. Ed Gallagher.
Sorry, I got four action items. Administration proposes approval of changes to the following policies based on new recommendations in order to be in compliance with state and or federal law updates. The first one will be the first reading of Policy zero one forty two point one, The Electoral Process. Like a motion.
To approve. Second.
Motion is second. Um. I like question or statement on this policy for anybody that can change it. Um the second line says using forms provided by the district. Um can candidates use forms provided by online from the Elections Commission website? Does the statute tell us that we have to use forms by districts?
No. Can you make that bigger? I can't see. Can you make it bigger?
Yeah.
So I feel like we should.
And people have used uh forms.
So I don't think we should limit a policy that says that forms need to be provided by the district.
Can we just take that sent, that, let's just take that piece out? Right? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna say.
I needed where you get your forms.
Yeah.
Just take this whole.
No, no, just where it says using forms provided by the district, take that sentence out.
So are you making a motion, Ed?
I would amend. Well, depends on who actually made the motion, but yeah, so make a motion that remove that section right there.
Don't including using forms and so using forms provided by the district, that all that should be gone.
Did it.
There you go.
Right now.
Perfect. Amy.
Let it say friendly amendment.
Uh so. And would you write down as making a motion for this policy?
That'd be.
You'd write Nick or me?
I think it was Nick Olson.
Well, I had Nick.
Okay, so Nick, you would have to amend the motion.
First paragraph.
Uh if you so choose.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so Nick amends the first paragraph. Anybody want to second that?
Motion to second Nick's amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, just that all four of these uh action items are Neola updates that we were trying to keep updated. So all of them tonight are Neola updates.
It was weird language, though. When I read that too, I was like, why only by the district?
Okay, I didn't notice it. So thanks for pointing that out.
Any other discussion on policy? All right, no other discussion. All those in favor with the amended section there? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next one is first reading of Policy fifty five thirty, Student Use of Possession of Intoxicated Drugs or Paraphernalia Drug Prevention.
Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion?
Only that a question is. I was just gonna say I reached out to um the principals about this and they very much would like some specific language in policy as Neola is suggesting. So they're very supportive of bringing this forward and so I just wanted you to know that. Sorry, go ahead, Laura.
I'm just, I wanted to make sure and maybe Ed with his law enforcement background might have better insight. Strain, different strains happen all the time. I mean, is it just something as new drugs come out or different strains come out that you just keep amending it? Or is there broader language that is used elsewhere? I trust Neola, but just curious about different strains of THC.
Different companies uh trying to get around different statutes and changing the makeup of the product they're selling.
Hmm.
Like a lot of the items that are being sold in CBD, CBD started this period technically legal because they have a certain amount of THC in them, very little amount, but nonetheless, they're still THC.
Right.
They're basically circumventing laws and ordinances um which we should still, you know, essentially ban for students in schools. Because a lot of these products still have THC in them.
Right. Do you feel like that's comprehensive enough then?
Yeah, for where we're at now. Um but you know, a year from now, there might be other ones that that change it.
Okay. Thanks.
Then my question was, I know we got lookalikes down here. A lot of people use essential oils. I'm not wearing essential oils, but like, you know, I know a lot of people wear necklaces and bracelets and different stuff, essential oils. This is essential oils needed down here as, so we have lookalike stuff. I don't know. Anybody else have experiences with essential oils? They wanna add me to?
Well, I even remember during COVID, a lot of the teachers using some diffusers that can.
That actually can be a problem, though.
Okay.
I don't remember what the cha- I don't remember what the problem is, but we actually outlawed those.
Air Act.
Yeah, that's a whole different issue and putting something in the air that kids might be allergic to.
Yeah, people might have allergies or sensitivity to those.
But this was like specifically for kids. Sure. Stuff at school.
I think part of the problem is when kids carry them around, it becomes a challenge with lookalike products. And so unless, and here it would say unless you need them, you you know.
But they have it with nurse.
Yeah, and so that's where it has the medication and the urgency, so.
Okay, that's just my question. Um any more discussion on this policy? Are you hearing no other discussion? All those in favor, same five, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next one is first reading of new policy eighty seven hundred, lactating uh employees.
Motion to approve.
Second. Did we have anything?
Yeah.
Second. Okay, for discussion.
So this is a new policy. Molly and I talked about whether we really needed to add this as a new policy because we do have language in the handbook already. But we did write this language to match the language in the handbook. So um Neil is recommending it as a policy, so we're bringing it forward, just their recommendation.
Is there any recommendation, I want to sound sensitive because I looked this up, I Googled it today, on how many times one could step out of a classroom or office or something to do this in the course of a workday?
You want to talk through that? Because we talked about it.
Yeah, it had language in there about how that obviously changes over the course of the child getting older. And we took it out because in our handbook, it says that it should just run concurrently with other breaks. So we thought we would just stick with that.
Okay, so like.
So it really isn't, I mean, we couldn't put a limit on it for people because it's gonna be different for each while they're based off.
Right.
So I was just thinking.
Depends on where.
I had to.
Time they're going through. But I'm just worrying like, is this like, so concurrent with normal breaks.
Right.
It was overall.
Yep. And then there's specific break language in the handbook. But I, we work with the principal on this based on the pregnancy workers fairness act that came out um to make sure that we have rooms in every building and um we haven't had any issues with, I would say, abuse of it, so.
And educating our principals and direct supervisors has been a part of um Molly's communication.
You have a discussion on this policy? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, same five, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh last action item is to rescind Policy thirty one twenty point zero seven, Employment of Casual Resource Personnel.
Move to approve.
Motion.
Second.
A second. Any discussion?
Only that this is old language and it is now not relevant.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, same five, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items, one informational item. Uh following language and policies listed below will be updated, reflect twenty twenty four changes in the Title Nine update. That's the student complaints, maybe you should say Director of Student Services.
Oh, yeah.
And then um updating the email address on that. And that goes with all the policies that are listed below it, that changes would happen.
I worked with Kyle to kind of figure out what's the best way of doing that, to make sure they all reflect the policy that was changed last month.
With that, that's all I have.
All right. Reminder that our next board meeting is next Monday, August twelfth at five PM then. That concludes our committee, the whole meeting this evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, next your time.
Got lots on it.